I swear, it's like herding cats. One more meeting. Good evening and welcome to the Highland Village City Council Early Work Session. Today is April the 26th. It is 6:00 PM. And we are going to get started. We're going to get an update on the Doubletree Ranch Park splash pad. Mr. Rosano?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Do we have a clicker? Then I need to be queued up.
Here it comes.
We're having a technical pause.
Found it. Everybody stop looking, we found it. I'll have to tell my mom I'm in a council meeting.
Okay, I think we're ready. I'm going to provide an update to the Doubletree Ranch splash pad. So we're going to start with the history of the splash pad. The Polysol surfacing was installed in 2017 and was open for the summer season. That was its first season. The Polysol warranty is two years over concrete. You may have remembered this because when I came about a year ago requesting new splash pad surfacing, we spoke about these things. So started to see signs of surface failure and delamination and de-bonding after the 2018 season. So we discussed with Polysol the issue, and they recommended to apply a top coat sealant to slow down the de-bonding. And 2018/19 budget requested funds for a top coat sealant, and it was approved. So May of 2020, we applied the top coat to prolong the life of the surfacing. And we started discussions on surfacing replacement and looking at splash pad surfacing options and began site visits to several cities in the metroplex to look at their splash pad surfaces, including Dallas, Carrollton, Flower Mound, Grapevine, Grand Prairie, and Lewisville. And the mayor and Paul actually went on one of those visits to Lewisville where we met folks in the city that manage the aquatics. After reviewing all of the surfacing types in the metroplex, staff recommended Durasplash. This was the one at Lewisville that they had at two sites with a chlorine-resistant athletic binder known as Crab. It has a three-year warranty with a nine-to-13-year expected life with biannual sealing. This is specifically designed for splash pads and pools. 2021/22 fiscal year surfacing replacement was recommended and funded with remaining 2018 bond proceeds totaling $183,103. November 2021, an agreement with Playgrounds, etc., was executed and started the surface replacement process. Playgrounds, etc., informed staff that the manufacturer of the chlorine-resistant athletic binder known as Crab is on hold due to supply shortages related to COVID and winter storm Yuri, and was hopeful that production would start after the first of the 2022 fiscal year. And as of now, no anticipated production date is given, unfortunately. So this is just a little reminder at the extensive weather that hit Texas in winter storm Yuri. As you can see, it's way beyond Houston. They had outages like we had up here. A lot of the plants that were responsible for or producing the polyurethane, so petroleum product, were shut down, and they were in a pause. So still to date, they're playing catch-up. So current conditions, we, late March discussions with Playground, etc., did not feel confident that the Crab binder would be available. So in April 2020, well, this month, a surfacing assessment was performed by staff to see if we can get it going. Well, there's rapid deterioration of the existing surfacing. You remember, it only had a two-year life over concrete. And here we are in 2022. It's five years, five years after its initial installation. So multiple areas of surface failure. Playground, etc., offered a non-chlorine-resistant athletic binder as an option. This is designed specifically for Playground surfacing. The standard binder has a three-year warranty with a seven-to-10-year expected life with biannual sealing. As you can see, it's roughly anywhere from three to about six years short of lifespan than the chlorine-resistant binder. And it would be an increase of $3,000 over the initial price for the standard binder due to supply shortages. It's in demand. So these are the current conditions that we have. These pictures were taken just a few weeks ago. You can see the delaminating. There's several spots like this on the splash pad. And this is just me. I'm not pulling it off. It's flapping. It's so the binder itself is not adhering to the concrete. And this is happening in multiple areas. This is a picture, another picture of that delaminating. Another one. And these are all going to be several pictures of this. And you can see the de-bonding that looks like gravel. Those are the little pebbles that make up the surfacing, and that is sloughing off. Another area of delaminating. And it's getting worse. And right here, we noticed that we had an increase in activity in wheel-type, non-motorized vehicles, skateboards, BMXs, scooters, rollerblades. And, you know, this contributes to the deterioration of the surfacing as well as the product itself being at the end of its useful life. So there is a need for fencing. There's another picture with wheel marks. And then this kind of tells a story. So it's a unintentional built-in skate park, wheel park. So whatever we do moving forward, we definitely want to put a fence, a barrier around it. At least, that's what I'm recommending. So using the standard binder, this is a non-chlorine-resistant binder. If we were to order the binder tomorrow on April 27th, it has an estimated six-to-eight-week lead time with an estimated construction time of six weeks, of seven weeks. That's approximately 13 weeks. So we have a 13-week timeline from April 27th with an opening of August the 1st. A 15-week timeline with the additional two weeks for the lead time with an opening of August the 15th. So using the standard binder, we'd have five weeks of usage on the estimated short timeline and three weeks of usage in the season on the estimated long timeline. We would potentially use anywhere from one to three years of surfacing life expectancy. And it is a surfacing that is not designed for pool or wet areas. No protection from chlorine. So staff recommendation is to wait for the chlorine-resistant athletic binder, the Crab, to become available. And if it's not available by January 31st of 2023, then move to the standard binder with an opening date on Memorial Day, May 29, 2023. We would also recommend installing a fence around the splash pad to deter skateboarding, cycling, scooter, and rollerblading activity with the goal of it opening as well Memorial Day of May 29, 2023. So the fencing, it's approximately an additional 650 linear feet. The estimated cost of $200,000 using 2018 project numbers, we had to add an additional 175 feet of this fencing at a cost of $36,000, which works out to about $206 per foot. So if we do the math there, you're looking at $134,000. And this estimate does not include engineering, bonding, setup, mobilization, gates, and inflation. We know that steel is in short supply right now. So the fencing, the blue line represents the existing. You can see it up there in the top portion next to the barn. And the red line is indicating the additional 650 feet. And as you can see, it would encompass the entire splash pad footprint. We felt that it'd be necessary also to encompass the synthetic lawn areas as it will prolong the useful life of that synthetic turf as well. Now, this is the type of fencing that we are recommending. It's, this is 175 feet of additional fencing that we added a couple of years ago, three years ago. It's the same fencing that came with the project. This was existing. So you can see, we matched it. And what's good about this fencing is that it doesn't allow people to pass through between the top of it or the bottom of it. And it's, it looks great. So I would recommend matching the existing fencing. And so now I'll take any questions. Yes.
Will you put, when you put up the new fencing, will you put signs that say, "No Skateboarding"?
We have them up there now.
Okay.
Yeah, on poles.
Okay. But what about on the fence?
Yes, we can put it on the fence as well.
Okay. And then the second question, if we don't repair this now, are we under any liability from somebody walking through and tripping on the areas that are flapping up?
We would remove those areas if they're a trip hazard. ADA specifications, anything over a quarter of an inch would be a trip hazard.
Okay. And is there any short-term fix to make sure that we don't have any more damage?
No, other than putting up construction fencing, which would be an eyesore.
Okay.
Robert, you have a question?
Yes. So the fence, what stops somebody from just hopping over the fence with their skateboard?
It's a good question. This is for the honest individual.
I mean, okay, and the honest individual is going to read the sign and not skateboard there anyways, right?
Right.
So it's an expensive fence. Is there a cheaper fence we could do, like a split rail or, you know, fake wood fence around it? I mean, because all we're really trying to do is stop the honest folk anyways, right?
Exactly.
So, well, not chain link, but just a split rail, you know, concrete.
What's the goal?
A wood-looking concrete fence or something like that.
So split rail, we had there, and it requires maintenance, and it's also a safety issue because of the splinters. So we actually remove, we're going to be removing all of it.
Okay. And then I get, sorry, last question.
I didn't answer the second question, though.
I don't even remember what it was.
No, a different type of fencing, like some type of a...
It's something cheaper than $140,000 to enclose the splash pad.
Right. So the balance is trying to get something that's going to look good aesthetically pleasing, and that's going to match what's already there. Now, obviously, we can hire an architect that can help with that as well. Or we, you know, those definitely are options that we can look into.
And then, I mean, we have cameras out there, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, we know when people are going out there. Is this a problem when the splash pad is operating, or is it an off-season problem?
It's anytime the splash pad is not in operation or occupied by users.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Which will be all summer long.
Be outside of summer.
And then what happens?
We're opening this year.
No, we're not.
No, it'd be all summer long.
Well, I misunderstood because I thought you said there was a, no liability issue with the damage right now. So you're saying no splash pad at all this year?
Right. Because the splash pad surfacing is designed to absorb impact attenuation. In other words, when someone falls on it, it's much like a playground.
Okay, that's not what, that's not what I'd heard. I thought that we could operate with the way it is. So we lose a whole season.
Mm-hmm.
Irregardless.
Yep.
So I've got a couple of questions. Talking about the cost of the fencing, you said the initial cost in 2018 numbers was $200,000. The $136,000 at the bottom of that is in addition to that?
No, we estimated $200,000 cost.
2018 numbers.
Let me back up. So an estimated cost of $200,000 using 2018 project numbers, $206 per foot.
Okay, so that, so the $134,000 is, is that in addition to the $200,000? Or is that the actual cost you're looking at?
We're looking at an actual estimated cost. We haven't got quotes or anything. This is just a number that we feel comfortable with presenting. It's $200,000, but the actual, we use the $206 per square foot price that was given to us in 2018.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And plot, okay.
All right. Next question is, you know, what Robert was talking about, what your exchange was about the honest user, I think was the word you, is the goal to prevent the honest user from getting in there when they shouldn't be? Or is it to prevent the dishonest user from getting in there?
I think it's a little of both. You know, there's, we've got a park board member that lives right there, and we've spoken about this for the past three years. He does what he can. There's a lot of skateboarders and folks like that. And I've met these individuals out there. They do damage there. They do damage on the pavilion. And I've let them know that Copper's Branch hopefully will be an opportunity for them to, you know, to take those talents that they have and use it at other places. And I asked them, tried to develop a relationship with them and ask them, you know, if they want to do this activity, to stay off the furniture and stay off the splash pad. And for the most part, they listen. But, you know, at the end of the day, it's a personal choice with them.
So if a policeman catches somebody in there skateboarding, does he arrest him or just slap him on the wrist and send him home?
I would have to defer to Chief Rhyme.
And I just, I just want to follow up. My personal opinion is whatever barrier we're going to put up, the mission should be to deter the dishonest person.
Well, yeah, but then you're going to have a 10-foot fence.
Yeah. Other liabilities associated with that climbing over a 10-foot fence.
I anticipated your question, and I was trying to find it on the mobile app of Franklin Publishing. I don't think that the ordinance specifically addresses skateboarding in the park, in that area. So if an ordinance amendment addressed it, Kevin, correct? Then we could take enforcement action. Absent of that, the sign is, that's what it is, sort of a sign.
The sign's not really enforceable.
Don't do this, correct? Yeah.
And what do we have to do to change the ordinance? Because couldn't some skateboarder get in there and hurt themselves? And it would be our liability?
To make an amendment to an ordinance is...
First of all, no, because, first of all, there's, you know, there's still, if there's no premises defect, in general, you're using a recreational facility anyway. There's certain special exemptions even from normal premises liability when we're talking about the use of parks and other recreational facilities. So somebody getting in there and using it improperly, you know, outside of hours, whatever, no, there's, there should be, you know, we should have immunity from that. You know, it's the old, the concept, common law concept of attractive nuisance kind of thing, doesn't apply to cities. So, you know, the issue I'd be more concerned about would be tripping hazard and stuff like that, which might arise to a premises defect that we need to be worried about fixing, making sure it's fixed or at least avoided, properly, proper warnings given and things like that. So a combination of signs and an effort to prevent people from, you know, tripping and/or anything like that would, is sufficient to avoid liability. That said, I mean, you still can't, I mean, we still need to look at what our ordinances are with respect to, you know, causing damage to city property, especially after being warned not to do it.
Well, that's where I was going to go next. If the facility is closed, is it not any different than if the building here were closed and somebody broke a window and came in and trashed council chambers in the middle of the night? I mean, is that, it's, you're...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, damage, criminal mischief-type damage is the same. I mean, so it'll be, you know, particularly if you're damaging government property. So, so there's the potential, we could, we could do that.
That wouldn't require any kind of ordinance change.
Yeah. But again, you know, what we have is classified misdemeanors. If they're intentionally, you know, damaging city property and it reaches to a certain, you know, cost level, you know, that obviously enhances the potential offense depending on the cost of the damage. And, you know, given the cost of some of our facilities and particularly damage to the splash pad itself, as, just looking at the numbers that Phil's presented to you, that can get, that could range to quite a bit of a cost to try to repair that.
Well, that's where I was going because you showed a picture earlier where you actually had wheel marks across the splash pad. And that's got to do some type of damage over time. So I'm just kind of curious. I mean, if we put up a fence, still not going to keep them out. We put up signs, it doesn't keep them out. And the only thing that's going to keep them out is a guy in a uniform coming up and saying, "Sorry, son, you're going with me to the jailhouse, and your parents are going to have to get you."
And it's also important to note that the majority spout all of the, all of the places that we visited for splash pads, if they were over 1,000 square feet, they were fenced off. You saw it at Lewisville at both locations.
So unless you want to change the ordinance, you just make it tougher for them to get in there. And the next thing, if you still see wheel marks, then we change the ordinance and give our police departments the capacity and jurisdiction to arrest them. I mean, that'll stop it.
We're covered under our ordinance, 100 feet within any recreational field. So you consider one of the fields over there as a recreational field?
Yeah, the soccer field.
And we also have the, we have curfew ordinance, which council passes every three years. And then we have the parks.
Closed.
Parks closed after a certain time also. So we do have, I mean, again, you're talking different issues. If they're in there skateboarding versus, you know, in the park. But we have some options. As long as we know that the park could be closed and it's been a problem, going to be a problem, foreseeable problem, then we'll provide a better solution to watch it.
Those skateboarders are coming in during the day. They're not skateboarding at night, are they?
Yes, they are. You're right. Good point. That's typically when we, when I catch them is usually around this time. And in the summer, you know, if, before the splash pad is open.
Could you assign one of our volunteer police people to be out there? We don't, I mean, they're volunteers. And do they have any authority under any kind of jurisdiction to?
No authority by design. But they have radios and can call. So at least we would know there's an issue and we can identify. Yeah, but there's, again, we'll work on this one. It's not, it's labor-intensive, manpower-intensive, let's say that.
So let's go back to the fact that it's not going to open this year. And we're not even sure when we can get the material. I mean, I think your slide said we have it by January of 2023. What happens if, what's our other options? I know, I understand that it can't be open, it makes, it can't be open this year, which doesn't make me happy, but it's just, and it's too dangerous.
It can be open, if I just back up.
Oh, if we use the other?
Yes. So it's a 13-week timeline with a standard binder, which opens August the 1st. And then...
That was gone.
School starts. I don't know when school starts.
And that was his point.
Yeah.
And then you're, then you're settling for a less superior, an inferior product.
Right.
That we know that we're going to have to spend money on.
Well, we're going to spend money on that, and then we're going to turn around when that product comes in, and we're going to spend more money to put down.
Well, if you went with the less superior, if you went with the inferior product, when a new product comes in, you're not going to come in and replace the inferior product. So you'd be putting the inferior product in now that has, knowing that three years from now, you're going to be replacing it again.
How much, how much again, the Crab, the Crab product, how much, how much again was that, was that costing us to do it right this time? To fix it? How many, how many years lifespan is that giving us?
If we can get it, how much was it?
It was nine to 13 years.
Yeah, but how much?
Three years.
What's the cost?
The warranty's the same.
The warranty's the same, exactly. Yes.
And the cost was how much again?
$183,105.
And that's what we passed?
Yes.
In the budget?
Yeah. So we went with the standard, there would be an additional $3,000 cost increase because of the demand for the standard as well.
And we know that nine to 13 years?
Is not going to happen.
We're not going to be looking back at year five saying, oops?
Year three.
Yeah, we specifically went to Lewisville to look at it, and theirs, theirs was beyond 12 years.
Yes.
Okay.
And it was very good shape.
So what did we, just out of curiosity, what did we miss in 2018?
The product. Different products.
Was the product even available?
Was this product available in 2018 when we, was the product?
Well, Phil wasn't here, but...
No, I was here in 2018. What we, what we noticed is that the surfacing was, you know, was de-bonding. So we contacted the manufacturer, tried to understand the life and the warranty and everything like that. And they had recommended the clear coat.
So we didn't know what we don't know.
Yeah. And that's what this product is recommending too, is that we clear coat it biannually as well to prolong the life of it. The Durasplash.
Go back, when were we supposed to start the project? I mean, we did budget last year.
Yeah, we were looking at, right after the first of the year, December, January.
Okay. I mean, so we're just now finding out that we can't do it, and we're going to lose a whole season.
Well, they're, well, they're telling us that it would become available after the first of the year, and we still had enough time. And, you know, we stayed in constant communication with us, with them, and they just kept saying, okay.
It's end of, end of April, not after the first of the year.
Right.
But I think what he's saying, John, is that they've noticed you over time. They've probably given you delivery dates, which they've not met. And they give you another delivery date.
Just, what they're, what they were telling us is we're in, we're in communication with the supplier and they're, you know, they're, they don't have a date yet, but they're hoping that it's going to happen soon. So we're...
I guess, I'm just disappointed that we lose a whole season. If we were looking at a backup plan, and we would have done the backup plan when we first saw the problem, we could have, we could have saved the season. You know, it's our premier park, and I understand shortages and things. And so one of the questions, there's absolutely no way to patch and get by one season and then still do that in January? Fix?
Well, we could.
No, that's just what I'm asking. I mean, is that a doable thing?
But what we're having is we're having delamination, or delamination failure through there. So if we have the season, we may have to be shutting it down to do repairs as it's open because it's, it's fallen, I mean, it's outlived its useful life by three years. So, but can we do that? Absolutely. Yes.
I mean, I just...
But then if we shut it down, and it's shut down for how long? How long does it take to do a patch, a repair?
Just have to get the company who specializes, which is a venture playground, in the Polysol and get a quote and an estimated timeline for them for doing it.
So it may not, I mean, it may still not get done.
Right.
And then we have to explain that we're closed on a constant...
Well, I'll just make one final comment. I mean, I agree with the mayor that we have no guarantee that January of 2023, we're going to have something. And so we could risk losing another season and be exactly where we are a year from now. So whatever we do, we've got to say, do it early. Okay? And three-year warranty, three-year warranty. One of them says, "I'm going to be nine to 10 years." The other one says, "10 to 13 years." Okay, you're not going to be here, we're not going to be here. No one's going to be here looking at that to say, "Did it happen or not?" Okay? I think you roll it to get it, get it open. Okay? I mean, what's a season cost you?
Yeah. And Mike, did you?
Yeah, so we know we can't do it, well, I think we know we can't do it this year. What do we need to do to make sure that when we come rolling around a year from now and fire up the pumps and everything, that it's all in working order? What are we going to do to mop? Is there a procedure where we can mop all this thing so we don't have to rebuild the entire pump house because it's been out of disuse? I mean, is there procedures, keep this everything? Yeah, like winterize, but...
We winterize it, and then we have a startup process, and we've got some work being done right now in the pump house, or changing the UV bulbs, doing some work like that, checking the pumps from a maintenance standpoint. That, that's the stuff that happens behind the scene every year.
Well, I know, but winterizing is one thing, but this is going to be an extended season, and it's, you know, it's not cold, it's going to be hot. The seals and everything going to, going to hold over time. You know, I know if I don't run my pool for a year, even if I've winterized it, I'm going to have a real hard time getting everything working again. So I'm just concerned about that. We're already going to have, you know, we already have to replace it, which we budgeted for. We're going to have to buy a fence, which we didn't budget for. And that, you know, I'm just, I just don't want to have any more surprises as far as having to replace heavy-duty expensive equipment because it was disused for, or out of use for a full year.
So will they go out there once a week and turn the pumps on and let it spray?
Probably not once a week, you know.
Or once a month? I mean, a schedule that they will go check everything?
Right.
Because I agree that if it just sits there, then when we do get the surface put in, something else is going to be a problem.
And typically... And typically, by now, we've been running the splash pad for a good four weeks, on and off. So it stays, you know, it's mothballed and shortly after the season, and shut it down. And then we start to start up, and everything usually four weeks before the season starts. So during the time of the summer of it being down, will we look at starting it up and making sure we get water running through it and those seals working? Yes.
Wow. I know you're disappointed as we are.
I'm very disappointed.
I know. And the whole Parks Department is as well.
Yeah, we prolonged the life of the splash pad way longer than what the manufacturer said. And we were very, very much wanting to have it done for this season. And.
Well, and then with the barn, you know, having air conditioning, I guess, then that would definitely tie into, to people using the splash pad. And I guess anybody that's rented it, you got to let them know that splash pad's not going to be working.
Right.
No wedding reception splash pad.
Yeah. So the barn is, is not splash pad related, but the party room, that is, the little room off the side of the barn. But we'll, you know, we'll start letting folks know. But, you know, obviously, council has, can provide direction. And if, to John's, Councilman Kix Miller's point, if we, if we, if the standard binder is ready, and it's going to be ready in, in six to eight weeks, am I, am I hearing that that's the direction that you would like for staff to head?
Not if it's not going to open until August the 1st. I mean, it's, school starts.
Not only that, but I think if we're going to go with that option, knowing that we're going to have to spend however many hundreds of thousands of dollars to do it right again, I, to me, that's just pouring good money after bad.
Well, I like the plan of keeping it shut down with your second Plan B. If you know that you're not going to get the right surface, or?
The chlorine-resistant surfacing.
Is Plan A, then you have Plan B right behind you. So you can implement Plan B and move forward for the next season.
Right, in January. If, by January 2023, we don't have that surfacing, then we do need to be looking at Plan B, because we don't need.
We can't miss another season.
Another season.
Right.
Put it that way, whatever, whatever's implemented.
Right.
Okay, put it, put in the stop gaps.
Are you going to put the, the chess pieces and the checkers back out? Because everybody that goes to the park is going to, they're going to be at the park. They'll be on the swings and the playground and?
Well, the chess pieces and the checker pieces wound up getting destroyed, unfortunately. A lot of vandalism.
Really?
Yep. So that's why we removed them.
Where's our police department? Where did he go? Wow. And those getting destroyed by skaters.
Like, you know, the mayor emphasized, we're very disappointed also. We did not expect to be at this place. Just absolutely did not. And it is unfortunate.
Yeah. So I think that kind of the, what I heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, council, is that we understand, and opening it on August the 1st or August the 15th, I think would just be, would just be a waste. I mean, we're spending money. But come January, I hope that you're giving a report to whoever's sitting up here, saying, we have it, we're installing it, it's going to take this long, and?
I would, I would hope that come October, November, and December, there are updates on, you know, leading up to that, that deadline.
Right.
Yeah, we're, we're in communication with them, you know. I pick up the phone regularly and talk to them. And, you know, originally, the standard binder wasn't the 68-week lead time. Now there's been more demand.
Right.
And when we first started having these discussions. So the timeline has, has changed very dynamic.
Is our, do we have an executed contract?
Yes.
So it's not subject to cost increases?
Yes, it is. Well, actually, I'm going to let Kevin answer that. We have an executed, Kevin, executed contract for, for a price, but because of supply chain and demands and other things, I know that there's a provision in there for 25% over the contract for circumstances like that. Am I, am I correct in?
Well, first of all, I haven't reviewed that contract lately.
Right.
I can't remember when I reviewed that contract. It's been a while. So I'd have to go back and look at it. I mean, obviously, you can make change orders, but, you know, if we've never issued a notice of proceed, you know, there comes to be a question whether or not we want to, I mean, whether it constitutes, you know, the delay is kind of a force majeure type delay, you know, because of the fact we can't get the, get the product, get supplies. But where that puts us on the cost is something we'd have to, we really have to look at the contract. You know, bottom line is, they're not going to, I mean, if their costs have gone significantly up because of transportation, materials cost and all that, you know, I think there's going to be an expectation that, you know, what are the damages to us other than a payment bond? And it may be less than the difference. They may just be willing to walk and have us take the payment bond and go on down the road. I mean, those are different options we'd have to look at.
Wow. Not an easy answer.
No, it, well, it's not, especially now that we haven't had the contract right in front of you to look at.
So no, the price isn't locked in.
Obviously, guys, this is, this is another COVID.
And winter storm Uri.
And winter storm Uri. I didn't know that that storm had a name, but we don't have our police cars that we?
What are we going to do about fencing? Are we doing it now? Or?
That's a discussion item for budget. I was going to bring it into the budget meeting.
Okay, so.
So not going to do it now.
Why do it now, though? I mean, we're not fixing the splash pad. It's only going to get worse, right?
Trying to keep people off of it, though, for safety purposes.
Next fiscal year.
Okay, so, so then, if the splash pad is going to be closed, and we don't want people on it for safety purposes?
We need it.
How are we securing the place now? Why are we, why are we waiting till, through the budget process to, you know, that's going to give, that's like six, that's like five months of the place being wide open?
We have the 100, ironically, it's the exact same price. We have the same price, or we have the money for the fence that we had for the, the surface. Now we have to just say we're using it for something else. I don't know if we can or not. You let us know. But that just seems like a rebudgeting for the surface, not for the fence. We can do the fence now if we need to.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's got to get, the place has got to get secured.
I'd do it now.
Right. So a couple of things with the safety, just to answer that. The splash pad surfacing does two, two things. It helps mitigate impact attenuation for serious injury, and it's also slip resistant. So there's a lot of slopes and things like that. So water causes those opportunities to happen, right? So if we, if we leave it dry, we're relatively pretty good. We're going to be out there like we are now, and like we do at every park site. We inspect these sites, and we specifically look for safety issues. And if there's one, we address it. We address, and we just, address them pretty quickly. So we'll continue that process now throughout the, until it gets replaced, and well after that as well. So if we, if we looked at, at fencing and wanting to do it now, that would definitely be a discussion that I can bring, look at and bring back to council as far as a, a cost and what that looks like.
But reallocation of cost is the key. Can we use funds that have already been dedicated for one purpose for another, and then just set a budget item for the splash pad?
Technically, it's the same purpose.
Well, the problem you've got is you've already got a contract signed to which you've dedicated the funds for, you know, we're trying not to, so we stay in, in line with the manufacturer and the contractor and don't lose that next January window. I'm hearing, you know, we may have this be able to start. We've got to keep the current contract in place. That means you've got to have funds, current funds obligated to stay with that contract. So no, these would have to be new, technically, they'd have to be new funds. But you couldn't just, you couldn't just say, we're not paying this now. I mean, I mean, you can figure it from a cash flow standpoint, you won't be spending it. But from a legal standpoint, you got to have them.
I'm asking a question that you probably don't have the answer to, but does the contract have a specified delivery date and a maturity date of when all the work is, has to be done? And if it's not done by that point in time, then technically, you may have to go back and renegotiate the contract.
That's what he was talking about earlier, is there may be a clause in there that says, hey, we can't help it if, if all the world goes to hell and the supply chain dies.
Yeah, I mean, if there's, I mean, if this is truly a force majeure type of situation, any, even, even our liquidated damages clause, which I believe we've got one in there, you know, won't apply because the delays are caused beyond, for reasons beyond the control of the contractor.
Okay.
Just like most other contracts, we have forced majeure delays.
So of course, what we want to do is to do the new surface as well as the fence, which does mean an increase in, in dollars. So we would just have to look at some of our bond funds and see if we can move some things around and see what kind of shape we're in there to probably get that fence done.
Okay, Robert, you get the last.
Sorry, real quick, I'm confused. Why are we talking about installing a fence to protect a surface that we're going to be replacing at a future date? It seems to me a construction fence or some sort of temporary barrier for now would be sufficient to accomplish what we want. And then we can do the fence and the surfacing when we do it all. Am I missing something? I mean?
You're not.
No.
I don't want to protect a surface that we're just going to rip out in six months.
And we have to take the fence down to be able to get in there to be able to do the surface.
So I'm not opposed to the fence necessarily. It's just I don't see any point in trying to figure out how to do that now.
Perfect. I totally agree.
Is there anything else Phil, the fence would protect in the meantime? We could use other means.
Does it protect the actual closing of the property?
Well, yeah, doesn't it actually protect the people that we don't want getting on there and injuring themselves?
That's, that was.
Oh, but they're doing something they shouldn't be doing. So.
I think that goes back to what Kevin spoke of earlier when Chief Rhine was up here, is the assumed risk and the intent of the design.
Right. I mean, obviously, you know, putting a temporary construction fence up there, you know, decent-looking one, would, you know, add to just the other type of warnings because we can put a sign on it to stay out, you know, those kind of things, you know, to just further create the, you know, bolster any alleged, any defense on over some alleged liability that somebody might put on us. But, you know, from an immunity standpoint, I feel we're, we're in pretty good shape.
Paint the post purple.
Okay. So, go ahead.
I was going to finish answering Dan's question. It was either Dan or Tom. And what would the fence protect? Well, the, if, if we put up a temporary fence or, or barrier of some sort, which is what we did when we added the 175 feet, we wanted to make sure that no folks were coming into the construction area. If we were to put something up now, what, what it would do is it would protect the integrity of the subsurface. If you have that much wheel activity and, and you have concrete under there, and you have the, the delamination also happening, and all of that is happening together, there could be some injury to the subsurfacing, the concrete.
In addition to the injury to the person.
That's some serious skateboarding.
Yeah, well.
If it injures the concrete, I mean, if it damages the concrete, that's some serious skateboarding.
Right. Well, there's a lot of places to jump off in that area if you got a BMX bike and?
All right. I think we have discussed this. I don't know, I think you have the direction. I hope that we're not.
Recommendation.
Yeah, you bring it back to, yeah, not to open, and bring it back to a future council.
So we're looking at January 31st, 2023, and we're going to be in communication with the, with the manufacturer. And if you remember, this, this particular surface had the longest life. I mean, it.
But you're going to give updates to the council periodically, starting, you know, budget year, bring, you know, once a month, hey, guys, we're still in contact.
Absolutely. Because if the, if the athletic, if the crab binder becomes available, we want to go ahead and secure it. And if it has a lead time out there.
Right. So that was going to be my question. Can they install that in the middle of winter? Or is that going to be one of those things, it's going to have to be 80 degrees before they can put it down?
There is a, a temperature requirement. And I don't think it's quite 80 degrees. I think, you know, and I don't want to speculate, but it's, it's, you know, probably between 50 and 60 degrees right in there.
So we're not looking into the actual fence now. We're going to put a construction fence.
Right. Yeah.
Just don't put any January 31 date. Make it earlier. You're going to, you're going to know.
If it, if it becomes earlier, yes.
I mean, Murphy's going to hit us.
If we can, yeah. And I think, I think Parks Department wants that as well.
Oh, yes.
They can get it done earlier, they're going to want to do it.
This is like the last date. I mean, it, we can't, you know.
Open this year as a skateboard park.
Hey, can you wait?
That's what I was thinking.
Can you wait till May the 10th to put this news, this information out? After May the 10th.
Where's that lame duck?
There you go. Can you do that after May the 10th? Okay, thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
We're going to move on, guys, because we have the continued discussion of fees and ordinance updates relating to animal control. Oh, Chief Rhine.
Mayor, council, thank you. It's my pleasure to be the second presenter on this topic. Kevin and I were both missed this one, so I hope the folks before me did a pretty good job in laying things out. So with an update on it, I'm not to, you know, go over every single thing that you discussed. I've highlighted the reasons why we're here tonight to review the, the service fees for adjustments to the master fee schedule. And then the other issues that were addressed were the animal ordinance updates that Wes recommended based on it being enacted for about six, eight months or thereabouts, and some things that needed to be adjusted. With that being said, here's all the fees that were initially presented, absent of red lines. These were led to me to believe that you have agreed upon all of these things as presented so far. So just to review, everything was covered. HV proposes on the far right, good to go. Next page, the one that seemed to be discussed was the trap permitting fee. And we're open for discussion on it again, and/or some of my input this time from, instead of Wes's or, or Chief Stewart, whoever had that input.
Okay.
Mr. Heslop, I know you.
Give us your, give us your thought.
I'm still going to recommend the 100, $100. And with the reasoning behind it as, it's one of our biggest services that we provide. It's a pretty big drain on my one person to do those things. He's got some additional duties and responsibilities coming up since we're changing the animal shelter contract slash, or lease that expires next month. The, the animal services that were provided by that shelter are being transferred to Wes. And/or we've got a myriad of backups at this point in time, but he is timed until we fill that gap. We'll be tied up with it. So we also, I mean, there's businesses that do those things. We have almost 5,000 rooftops in the city. We have about five to eight traps. We can't provide that service to 100 in the, in the timeframe. I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Heslop before the council meeting because I knew he had some questions on it. And, you know, we could either recommend to reduce the fee, which I'm not, again, not my recommendation, because as fees, this whole, this whole project was addressed to the council, it was about bringing our fees up to date in today's 21st century, year 2022, with pressing on in the future also, and not stepping backwards. So those fees were not out of line with what other cities were proposing, or where they were doing business, or were going to be doing business, more importantly. Mr. Heslop asked, or we discussed the, the possibility of having a no fee for, if you provide your own trap? And I had a chance to, you know, look at the ordinance on it. And, and there's a permit required because our animal control officer would monitor that to ensure and/or to know that animals, if they're being trapped or left in traps, that we would, we would monitor and we want people still let us know they were putting out a trap. But I believe the fix without changing the ordinance or getting too complicated was, would be that under the fee schedule, Kevin, and you could, you can chime in here if I'm wrong, but under the fee schedule, we could list city provided at 100 and owner provided zero. And then that would accomplish, if you bought your own trap, which I'm going to guess is $100 or, or thereabouts, you, if you had a continuous problem, you could handle or, or manage that and still receive the city's help to come remove those animals. It's just that we don't have, I don't have the staffing level to continuously put those traps out and remove them and move them around all the time. So it's just to, trying to relieve the burden on Wes.
Okay. John?
The question that came up when we were discussing it was the state mandate as far as trapping and moving, carrying, transporting wildlife. Okay? Whether you do it yourself or whether you have Wes. If Wes did it, he's licensed to do it. Okay? If a citizen does it, what's the liability of a citizen trapping wildlife? We had that discussion, and no one really had an answer. It's from a. We had that discussion and no one really had an answer as from a state law standpoint.
It was against the law.
Yeah, is it against the law to trap a possum?
And, and transport it sometimes.
That's what it really wrapped around as far as paying for the city to take a.
Wes was here and he couldn't answer that question?
He did.
Oh.
He said that it was the, it was a state law that you can't trap an animal and transport it unless you have some kind of a license.
Yeah.
So.
The fee wasn't really the big issue, other than Tom didn't want to pay for a critter that came into his own yard.
And I felt the same way. You know, I didn't ask, I didn't invite the possum into my pool. Why am I having to pay to remove it?
I mean, I think, you know, pay $100 for Wes to take a critter? Okay, that's good. But what's the law as it applies to taking critters?
That was not conveyed to me. So I wish, I mean, again, absent of, if that's not a law that any citizen can trap an animal, he mainly, I believe, is the issue, is that they, you know, use a humane trap, number one, and/or you check that trap regularly to ensure nothing's in it, okay? And the reason that I would believe that the city has a reasoning for obtaining a permit would be that we would inspect those processes. So to have the trap in place, that we would come and inspect it, it would just cut down on the storage while we don't have traps any, we don't store them because they're all out all the time. But Wes would do the follow-up to stop in and ensure that process is being followed. And if he didn't follow it, then there'd be a violation of the ordinance and some follow-up on that also. But it would, in theory, I mean, I'd be hopeful that it would reduce some of the carrying and moving and tracking, all the, well, the traps that are in place to move them to the next place. And it would give citizens an opportunity to use their own traps, whereas right now they don't have an option when we run out of traps. They have to call, they have to call some other professional anyway. And we do, I think the list was on there.
Over 300.
Yes.
A bunch.
Yes, it's a lot. So with that direction, I mean, if that's, if you're good with the fee for 100 for the city providing it, if you're good with the citizens being able to provide their own traps and still following the ordinance that they have to get a permit, I will check into the law, you know, to ensure, now that I know that that's a specific question. And then when we, you know, come back again, this has to go through the process for ordinance for two reads. The fee schedule is a one read, and we could definitely ensure that within the fee schedule there was, it was identified as a city-owned trap for a fee and privately-owned trap as zero.
Chief, would you remotely consider reducing the fee to 50 bucks?
Not my consideration, it's yours. Because again, as a department head and the rising costs, as Phil stood up here and talked about these costs and where they're at, is we're looking for the, I'm looking for the long-term haul versus the short-term answer, so, you know.
So correct? Hang on, hang on. Robert.
Okay.
Well.
I'll support whichever, whatever you want.
I just echoed Dan's point. I didn't ask the possum to come and swim in my pool and die. I mean, I know you're laughing there, but I'm sorry.
But if it's dead, you could.
Yeah, but you can.
Well, I gotta get him out.
Well, okay.
Then you're just getting in trouble with the waste.
Or maybe he's still alive and he bites me.
Chief, can you go back one slide? So again, I asked this last time and I forget the answer, I apologize. Trap permit is strictly for the trap itself and the monitoring. If Wes or whoever has to empty that trap, do they also get charged the deceased animal removal fee?
If he's dead?
Okay, so.
It's a tricky answer, but let me explain it the way I understand it from Wes, okay? Is if you, if you, I would say if we're trapping it and it dies, it shouldn't have, it's a humane trap, okay? The meant thing, our goal is to trap it and remove it, okay? Not have it die inside that cage or trap, excuse me. If an animal is deceased on your property and you want us to come and pick it up and remove it, there's a fee. If you place it in a bag by the road, Wes has for his tenure here and we support, we pick it up for nothing. If you bag it, we'll pick it up. He's basically saying, we'll make a break for you on that process. And he makes that determination, so.
Okay, sorry, last question. So to Councilman Jaworski's example of a possum or hanging around his tree that's alive, would he have to get a trap from the city for the city to come out and remove that animal? Or can the city come out and just catch it and take it away without a trap?
Without a trap, hmm.
How do you catch it?
I don't know.
I'm just asking, I mean.
Lasso.
A net.
A net.
I got a lot of money tied with Wes for training, but I don't think he knows how to, how to do that one yet.
Okay.
So now he has a, you know, again, those, some of those rules start falling under the humane treatment of animals and dart guns and things like that. Now, if it's a rabid animal that he can, you know, verify, the rules change, okay?
Well, $100 for three months of a monitored trap is, I gotta think cheaper than any private business out there, so I don't see any issue with that thing.
Mr. Lamardo?
Yeah, my question was if we, what you proposed was to, if you, if you have your own trap, you will come and take it and give the animal, you know, drive it to wherever it goes towards humanely released, and that was no cost. I think there should be a cost on that, even if you provide your own trap. Or did I misunderstand somewhere?
That's the way I explained it to say.
Okay, I think that, you know, if Wes has to take his time and go drive to wherever we take these animals to that are still alive, there's gotta be a cost involved in that, even just because you provided a free trap or your own trap. I think there's gotta be something for the, for the time and the effort and the, you know, just the dollars of driven and gasoline to go take the animal where it needs to go.
So another line, let me, let me better explain, or explain it in the way you did to me, is if the city would provide the trap and the removal of an animal, okay, or provide the trap, it's $100 fee for that. The removal's included in that cost, by the way. If you provide your own trap, I would recommend zero unless an animal's trapped, because you could put a trap out there.
Oh, no, no, I see what you're saying.
Yes.
But I think that obviously if we, if the trap is successful and then Wes has to go and pick it up and take it to wherever Wes takes those animals, there should be a fee.
There should be the same fee, just make it simple.
So $100 for a trapped animal removal, basically.
If you provide your own.
I don't know what the cost is, I'm just saying it needs to be something. It can't be zero.
I think if I buy my own trap and I catch the animal, I shouldn't have to pay 100 bucks for it to be removed. Now, I agree.
I don't disagree with that, but I don't think you should pay zero to have it removed.
Right, I would agree, I would agree.
$50 to remove your own, how about, I mean, I'm playing auctioneer here. $50 to remove a trapped animal that you provided your own trap for, which is still, or we, or we, I could just use the deceased animal removal fee, which is already up there at, oh, we just changed, there was a change in that. They just found a new contract or a contract available with a company that cut that cost for us, so that was another change. So deceased animal removal is at $15, up to 25, Murphy, let's see, $25.
I'd go 25 bucks.
I think 50.
Yeah.
But Chief, if you could clarify, because I believe the cost, that was for a 90-day period.
Yes.
So that would mean, quite likely, if you trap one animal, you're gonna trap two.
Oh.
So are you saying per animal charge or are we saying if you get that permit?
Per head.
Not for 90 days.
No. Not per head? What if all you get is a tank?
In my opinion, if we're charging a flat fee with sea trap for as many critters as you can catch, the transportation fee with your own should probably be steady or flat as well for the time period. So if you catch one, it's 25 bucks, if you catch 50, it's 25 bucks. I just, I think it needs to be consistent.
But you're almost on a trip charge, though.
Yeah, you're not gonna catch it.
Okay, should we pay?
Five animals, 10 animals, one trip, it's still the same price.
We pay 56?
Understand, I'm just trying, I'm just, I'm not trying to make a profit off this deal. I think I'm just trying to.
We shouldn't be making a profit.
Cover the city's costs.
We won't.
I get it.
We won't, we won't make a profit.
Okay, all right, I'll acquiesce. I'll go 100 bucks for the permit and 50 bucks for the renewal. Let's move it on.
100 bucks for the, you, the permit for your trap?
Mm-hmm.
And 50 dollars for the removal?
No, not for my trap, their trap.
Yeah.
100 dollars for?
Your trap.
Your trap.
You put the trap out.
You have to have a permit for your trap?
Correct, that's the 100 bucks.
That's the 100 bucks, yeah.
What if I have my own trap?
Still need the permit from us, so we can track it, but if you provide it, he's proposing that if you catch something, it's a $50 removal fee for that animal.
And how much is the permit?
Zero, if you have your own trap.
Okay, that's fair. I'm good with that. I'll go with it.
There's no monitoring of that trap by the city?
Not by the city, no.
Hey, I called him, I called him out five times last year. I monitored the trap more than he did.
Okay.
I think, is that, do we have a consensus?
Yes.
Have we beat this dead possum?
Yes, let's move it on.
Thank you, Chief.
25 bucks.
I think we have beat this possum.
So I'll re.
We have.
No.
He's playing. He did for Angie, just so she makes, she, so, so $100 for a city-owned trap for us to do the permit and remove an animal that's caught over that 90-day period. For a personal trap, there's no fee, you still will have a permit issued by the city for it, and if you catch any animals, it's $50.
Per removal?
Per.
Per trip, I would think, right?
No, per removal.
Per removal.
And then that 90 days that I pay my permit, let's say you catch a trap, you catch a guy in the first 90, in the first 30 days, under that permit, do I get unlimited traps?
Unlimited, well, you're.
For 90 days?
If they're your own traps. We only give one trap out to a resident at a time.
You're not gonna get multiple animals in a trap. Here you go.
But do I get repeated traps during 90 days?
You would go on a rotational basis with the city for our five traps.
May 17th cannot get here fast enough. May 17th cannot get here fast enough.
So.
Okay, I'm good.
Yes, we are, we have it, is there, oh, I'm sorry, is there more?
There's a couple, I just, just to review these things, okay, that's what that was. These were the ones that you all addressed and agreed upon, so this is just a review to say, hey, basically, this gives the city manager and/or his designee, okay, the authority to waive fees on that fee schedule. Okay?
I think there was a consensus for that.
All right, there. Change.
Yes.
That. What's the other change? I still continued from that, it's a long, just change that word file.
Can you go back one? Sorry, real quick. Okay, thank you.
Do y'all have any, Council, does anybody have any comments? Okay, questions? All right, well, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I think we, again, beat the dead possum.
Just happy there's no chicken coop discussion, so.
All right. Well, Council, you know what? We are supposed to get an update on park security cameras, but we're gonna work, move that to late work session because it is now 7:00 PM and we actually have a meeting. So, is that, is that good with city manager and attorney? Perfect, okay. And with Chief? Okay, perfect. Then you know what, Council, we are going to adjourn at 7:02. Does anybody need a quick break, Council? Anybody? Robert, you know, you got, everybody's ready?
Yep.
What did, okay. All right, well, this, good evening and welcome to the Highland Village City Council Meeting. It is April the 26th, it is 7:03, and we are going to get started. Let the record show, all council members are present, and Mr. Feaster, Councilman Feaster is going to lead us in prayer and the pledges.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for our families, our health, our safety, and the many other blessings you have bestowed upon us. As we gather here tonight, we pray for your wisdom and guidance as we consider this evening's agenda. May we continue to serve in good faith towards each other and represent the best of our community's interests. We ask that you continue to watch over our city staff, our first responders, and see them safely home to their families at the end of their day. And we pray you watch over and protect our military personnel at home and abroad and keep them safe as they selflessly serve to protect us. In your most blessed name, we pray. Amen.
Amen, thank you, sir. Please stand for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Moving right along, we have Vister comments. Ms. Miller, we have any Vister comments?
Yes.
Thank you. No. Am I reading or is he coming up to speak? Okay. Thank you. We are going to, we're gonna do Vister comments and Mr. Meek, if you'll come up and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Bill Meek, live at 2980 Hillside Drive. Started on Highland Village here for full terms, and I guess it was, what, eight years to go through. Enjoyed every bit of it. And I went to a lot of meetings here in Highland Village, and I always thought this was the best place. I moved from Louisville over here. I thought this is the best, best place to live. We're in Texas, and that's what really bothers, what really just unboils me to be here in Texas, in this, in one of the best cities, small city, Highland Village in Texas. So, I just, I just want to be here to say and say, I really applaud everybody running. I wanted to run. I was asked to run here several years ago and so forth, and it was a pure privilege to be here and to do that. And I, very few meetings, I only, I remember that I missed any meetings, so I was always here, wanted to cooperate and so, you know. But I, I just want to be sure, I'm seeing what's going on in America today, and it just bothers me to know, you know, I'm a veteran, 31-year veteran, so, you know, I'm America, I'm Texas, and I'm for Texas, and I try to, I've worked in elections for years, you know, before I got on City Council and then after got off, so, you know. So I've been doing everything I could for America and for, for, you know, the country and serving the cities in Navy and so forth, you know. But I just want to tell, tell our citizens and so forth to make the right selections for our city councils, people running for city council and the two mayoral spots and so forth. Just look it over, search, so forth, because we have no place to build additional houses and so forth. So this house, this city has to be run properly in the next several years and so, you know. So we need good people, smart people, doing the right thing, because we're still taxpayers and we pay everybody's money and so forth. Their money that they have to pay taxes, I just got to pay my taxes less money and so forth. And let me tell you, I paid more than I ever have, you know, so. And, yeah, it costs money, it's going up, it really, the cost of living here, so it's going up, so, you know. But I just want, you know, I pray and urge everybody to look at your, at your, at your people running for city council as well as mayor, so, you know, just do the right thing and so forth, you know, and search it out, talk to them and so forth. I'm a good citizen, I want to be here for everybody and so forth, but I want everybody to do the right thing in this city. I pray for it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Bill. We appreciate you being here. Okay, Ms. Cleary? If you'll state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Piper Cleary. I live at 557 Selmaire. First, I want to thank each of you for serving on city council and giving of your time and your resources and being here. I know there's an election address, and some of you are moving on. Not all of you will be here in a couple weeks, but, and I am casting my vote later this week, so I'm a voter. But I came tonight to express my concerns in two different areas. First is the topic of build-out that we keep hearing so much about. The vibe I get from conversations and communication from the city is to lay out plans to develop every available acre in order to collect tax revenue. That's the last thing I would like to see happen. In particular, that triangle property up on 2499, that's one of the only areas in Highland Village that has unpaved trails. Okay, my family and I love being outdoors. We love all the paved trails in Highland Village and the surrounding areas. We use them, I want to say daily because we walk our dog all the time, but at least weekly, like, all the time. But that area up there is one of our favorites because in the heat of the summer, it's, there's sand on part of it, there's shade, like, you can kind of like get away. The lake is lapping up there. It's not paved with trails, it's not high-rises, it's not houses. So, let me stay on track. The Bible clearly lays out roles of government as punishers of evil and promoters of the good. So the aggressive build-out plan seemed to be more concerned about increasing taxable revenue. And I realize that Highland villagers love our amenities, and we really appreciate the services that are provided. But I think it's more important that, more important than build-out is to keep, building out those last remaining acres, is to fill and keep good businesses in the developed areas that are already developed, whether it's redevelopment or whatever. But can we keep some of it undeveloped? That'd be great. The second topic is speed limits. Seems to be a little bit of a buzz around here lately with a couple wrecks on Easter weekend. And the quick answer that everyone jumps to is speed bumps and lower speed limits. I don't want it either, okay? I live on Selmaire. Cars are coming up and down my street all the time. But, one, no speed limits because the emergency crews, I mean, that's a pretty obvious one. They need to be able to get to where they need to go quickly. The speed limits, if teens are drag racing down a street, they're not going to go slower because the speed limit was five to 10 miles per hour slower than it is now. Okay? In fact, no city legislation is going to fix that one. If teens are racing and wrecking their cars at 8:00, 9:00 AM on Easter weekend, that's a parenting issue. Okay? That's what it is. It's not a lack of governing laws. So if the general consensus is that people are driving too fast in our city, we need to look at just enforcing the laws that are already on the books with the speed limits. So, again, thank you for your service and your time.
Thank you for being here. Okay, counsel? We're going to move on to mayor and council reports of items of community interest pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0415. Counsel, does anybody have anything?
I've got one thing, mayor.
Okay.
I have had two or three residents say, "Thank you for the new flagpole and having all three of our flags up outside the city."
I think that flagpole was broke and they had to replace it.
They did, they had to wait on the parts, but it's no other-
Yeah, absolutely. Good, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. All right, then we are going to move on. Oh, that's me. We have two presentations, proclamations, so I'm going to do those. I'm not sure. The first one I opened, Child Abuse Prevention Month in Highland Village. Do I have Ms. Perry? Are you by yourself?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, that's okay. Come on, come over here. We're going to do it right over here. Huh? No, I'm going to read it. I'm going to read it to you, and you're going to stand here beside me. Remember, I have the big print, so I can see. Okay. Whereas, oh, I'm sorry, I just stabbed you with my thumb. Whereas, child abuse and neglect is a complex and ongoing problem in our society, and child victims of abuse and neglect need and deserve support and assistance to help them cope with the tragedies in their young lives. And whereas, in 2021, Denton County Child Protective Services received 7,134 reports of child abuse, and of those, 4,032 were assigned to caseworkers. Wow. Whereas, 2021, Denton County Child Protective Services had an average of 546 children in its protective custody. And whereas, Denton County has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child maltreatment and to help parents obtain the assistance they need. And whereas, effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas, National Child Abuse Prevention Month offers us all the opportunity to promote and support programs that offer protection and safety for our community's children. Now therefore, I, Charlotte Welcox, mayor of the city of Highland Village, in honor of all children in Denton County, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Highland Village. Thank you so much for being here. And I know all you do, and that's a lot, so I think you, I think somebody's taking a picture. And then I'm going to give you an opportunity to speak. Perfect. You want to, you want to say something?
I just want to say, number one, we need volunteers to always help us. I'm on the Child Protective Services Board and Community Partners, and we both work with the CPS to make sure that our children are safe in Denton County. And we're no longer letting our children stay in hotels. We had to, first, our kids, we had to have them stay in the CPS building because we do not have enough, and we still do not have enough foster parents in our area. But we are now, we have now got a house. The CPS Board and Community Partners went in together, and we have a house in Denton that we have furnished, that we put our children in, which means the workers have to continue to work 24 hours instead of going home. They have to work because somebody has to be in that house with the children at all times. And we are really working on just trying to make people aware. And we have a new focused mom and a focused dad where we're trying to train our parents and teach them things. I was surprised we did Thanksgiving baskets, and some of the parents didn't even know what to do with white potatoes. They're like, "I never cooked these. What do you do with them?" you know? And that's just not, it's just not right. And we want our kids to have good, healthy meals. We want our children to be in school. We don't want our children beaten and abused, and we certainly don't want our children on drugs. And sometimes when we go, and the police go in the homes and CPS bring the children out, their drug, the percentage of drugs in their system is higher than what's in the parents'. And they haven't been doing it just for the fact that they're around the parents. So I do thank Highland Village. We've had, in Highland Village alone, in the last three years, we've had 11 children that have been adopted. And we really appreciate that. And we just thank our mayor. She works with us. She comes and reads to our children, and she always such a big help. And I really hate that she's going to be leaving because we already love her and all the children love her, too. So on behalf of Community Partners, Denton County, and the Child Protection Services Board, Denton County, we want to present you with this.
Oh, thank you.
We're going to have to get you another shirt.
Oh, thank you, Laurie. I appreciate it, and I appreciate all the work that you and all the volunteers do. This is such an important thing, and we all do, counsel, all. I appreciate that. So thanks for coming tonight.
And Dan's wife is the third on our board. She's at the south side of the building.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Okay, and the next one? Ms. James? Are you? Oh, for mental health awareness? Who's?
Yes.
Perfect, well, come up here.
I'm sorry.
I'm Julia Roberts, so.
Calm down.
Why are y'all laughing? Everybody thinks-
Thank you, mayor.
Absolutely. So I have a proclamation for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect. Yes, ma'am, you make me feel so old.
I'm sorry. I'm probably older than you.
No, I don't think so. Okay, well, here we go. Whereas, citizens of Denton County value their overall health and that of their families and fellow citizens, and are proud to support observances such as Mental Health Awareness Month and Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. Whereas, the need for comprehensive coordinated mental health services for men, women, and children places upon our community a critical responsibility. And whereas, the Denton County Behavioral Health Leadership Team, Denton County MHMR Center, United Way of Denton County, and the Wellness Alliance for Total Children's Health of Denton County, led by Cook Children's, have a unique partnership and prevention-based approach to serving children and adolescents to effectively address the mental health needs of children, youth, and families in our community. And whereas, each citizen, local business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, and faith-based organization shares the burden of mental health concerns and has a responsibility to promote mental health wellness, recovery, and support prevention efforts. And whereas, it is appropriate that a month be set apart each year to direct our thoughts toward mental health education and the support of treatment and recovery. Now therefore, I, Charlotte Welcox, mayor of the city of Highland Village, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month and May 7, 2022, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day in Highland Village. And thank you so much-
Thank you.
-for being here and for all that you do. I'm going to give you an opportunity to speak.
Would you like me to move there?
You can stand right there and be on the microphone. I mean, you can, yeah, you can do whatever. Can you hear her?
I represent the Denton, let's see, Wellness Alliance for Total Children's Health of Denton County. It's called WATCH, and it's organized by Cook Children's Hospital, and it's a consortium of leaders and providers throughout the community that are working towards mental health for children and youth in our community. And I just want to give you a little bit of statistics. We know mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. One in five adults will experience a mental illness in a given year. That translates to 167,242 residents of Denton County. If I'm not mistaken, it's around 800,000 population now in Denton County? Maybe nine?
It's growing every day.
In addition to that, one in five adolescents have or will have a serious mental health illness. But there's hope. Mental health illnesses are both common and treatable. We appreciate the city of Highland Village for helping us increase awareness of mental health conditions and resources as part of Mental Health Awareness Month.
Absolutely, absolutely. We appreciate you being here and letting us do this.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, absolutely. Oh, yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Yes, Charlotte.
I knew that.
I mean, yes, mayor.
It's Charlotte.
I don't want to be too informal.
Oh, please, be informal. Well, you know, it's the name of a princess, so.
It is. Thank you so much.
What can I say? Yeah. It's the name designated for princesses. And where's my crown?
And your wand.
And my wand. Okay. All right, and now we have a presentation from Denton County Transportation Authority on the upcoming public involvement opportunities. Welcome.
Thank you, mayor, and members of the council. Thanks so much for having us here today. My name is Paul Christina. I'm the interim chief executive officer at DCTA. I'm joined by Mary Worthington and Brittany Farr from our community relations and government, community affairs and government relations departments, respectively. And we're really happy to be here with you this evening. The Denton County Transportation Authority exists to provide essential transportation services to the people who need it in Denton County and the people who choose to use it. And commensurate with that is, that is the way that we deliver the value and return on investment that this city and our other member cities make in the authority. And so it's our privilege to stand here before you today and talk about the opportunity for the residents of Highland Village to speak into a public involvement process around the title that you see there, a comprehensive operations and fair structure analysis. So you may be aware, I'm sorry. It's not just a clicker. I'm sorry, what? Do you scroll? Okay. I apologize. So you may be aware that our agency has gone through a number of service changes over the course of the last few years as we've sought to optimize our service to the maximum benefit of our riders. In January of 2021, we entered into an agreement or started the conversation for an agreement with a company called Via for our GoZone service, which is an on-demand service that's an app-based platform where people can call for a ride, be picked up at their location and delivered to the location of their choice. Over the course of the last year, also, we've used the opportunity to refine some of our bus service offerings in Denton and in Highland Village in order to, again, optimize the resources that we've put on the road. In March of 2022, we started a new bus route in the city of Denton. And then, thank you very much. And then we are now facing this opportunity before us this summer where we will make, the board will make another decision on what is the right mix of GoZone and bus service that moves forward into, over the course of FY 2023. Okay. And so in this comprehensive operations analysis process, what we're trying to do is understand at a very high level of detail based on the data that we have available to us, who uses our bus routes, where they use them, what they use them for, and what are the peak demand times of those routes across all of our areas. We have the ability to look into the data that the GoZone app provides us to see precisely where people are calling for rides and where they're trying to be delivered to, which is a real advantage in route planning for fixed route because typically we rely on census block data about transit, transit-dependent or transit, those that have a prevalence of using transit. But this allows us to see at a very granular level of detail where that transit demand is. And then we're also looking at the fare structure that we're going to offer to understand how we might be able to use fare model to determine or to help drive the type of behavior that would cause people to use GoZone towards a fixed route in order to, again, optimize the service offerings and make it the most efficient that it could be. In order to make these sorts of decisions, we're going to be hosting a number of public meetings and having lots of opportunities for the public to engage. And that's the message that we want to leave you with here tonight, is that this opportunity for public engagement exists for the citizens of Highland Village, that if they're not transit users themselves, they may know people who are transit users, as might you, that you might help us spread this message and this opportunity. So the potential fare structures that we have in front of us So the potential fare structures that we have in front of us that we're considering are really three different options. One is a flat fare. This is what people are most typically used to when they get on a bus and pay for a bus pass to go from point A to point B. We could talk about a distance-based fare, which is kind of like a taxicab. You get into a taxicab and the ride cost varies depending on how far you're going to go. Or a hybrid fare model, which is really a combination of those two, where you might get a fixed route or a fixed fare for a certain number of miles. And then beyond that, if you choose to go even further, then there's a variable fare associated with that as well. And that might be one of those tools that are utilized by our board to encourage people to make the most efficient trip possible by using GoZone to get to a fixed route, be it the bus or the train. And so in this public involvement process, this is what we're going to lay out for the public. We're going to provide opportunities to see in detail what are the boundaries of our GoZone service, what are the fixed routes that we have in place and that we're considering, the times and varied capacities at which those services are offered. We're going to offer conversations about fare models. We're going to provide plenty of opportunities for people to provide their feedback, either in these forums or if you go to dctafeback.net, there's an opportunity to go onto that website and provide general commentary. You can create a, you can make a survey. You can also interact with a map that allows you to put ideas on the wall and say, this is the way that I use the service in this particular location. And so this is how GoZone or a fixed route could help me in my daily trip. We're also really willing to engage in individual question-and-answer sessions if anybody cared to reach out to our staff. That opportunity is also available through our website, and the details are here below if we can. Oh, there you go. Got it. Mary Worthington is with me today is the resource for us to do that. So this slide just shows the website and the interaction that you'll be able to see by going to dctafeback.net. Again, we have some handouts that we can leave behind for people who are interested with a QR code that you can scan. And then this last slide is just a list of the upcoming public involvement events that we have. These are virtual events as well as some in-person events in town, in Lewisville. And we are also working with your staff to find opportunities to have another public engagement event live and in person in the community of Highland Village. We hit the McAuliffe Chili Cook-Off just before the public comment period started, had some great posts and interaction on our website and on, or rather, on Facebook and our page there. And so again, just really thankful for the opportunity to be here with you and share this opportunity that you all have to help shape the future of the service that we provide so that it can be as effective as possible for your residents. So that's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions if you have any.
What's the time period for the survey?
So the period started on April the 18th and it closes on May the 17th.
May the 17th, okay.
That's right.
Okay. So we need to encourage everybody to go on and participate that. Council, does anybody have any?
I have one question. Do you know, so you track the data and the percentage of your services used by community?
We collect data in the aggregate, yes, sir.
Okay. So can, do you have any idea what percentage of our population uses your transportation services?
The GoZone service itself is, the data is blended between Highland Village and Lewisville because there's some challenges in figuring out what's the, which zip code that we're assigned to when a person calls for it. But we continue to dig into that to get more and more fidelity over time.
Okay.
And I think that might be a future presentation.
Right.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
For council. Anybody else have anything? Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate y'all.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
You, too. Okay. We can move on to Foodie Friday video.
Chef, thank you so much for having us over.
Thank you so much.
Oh, my pleasure. We're excited to get here to see Taro Kitchen and Cocktail. And everyone, before we start, we want you to know you're about to see something different. Today for Foodie Friday DFW, chef Marvin Revelario and I are going to talk about the concept, the food, and why you need to come here for date night. So I understand, chef, that you've been doing this a very long time.
Yeah, for sure. 22 years old. When I, when I have, when I was a boy, I opened my first restaurant in Guatemala. Right now, I have about 22 years working in the industry of restaurants.
That's awesome. So what, tell me, I'm curious, when you were 18 in Guatemala and you started your restaurant, what did you start cooking?
I started cooking the seafood.
Yeah.
Because I love the seafood. I found the seafood, a lot of flavors, different tile to cooking, right? Right now, it's my recipe, my family recipes, right? I am working hard, trying to make the, my family recipe for the people over here.
Very cool. Well, I'm going to be honest with you. Every time I've done one of these interviews and I meet someone who's been doing it from a young age, family recipes and everything like that, I know I'm going to have a great meal.
Yeah, for sure. It's a great meal.
So all your family recipes in here, you take great pride in what people get to see. And plus, this restaurant is beautiful inside. I mean, the atmosphere.
It's amazing. We're working hard, a lot of people working hard, my team, right, my sous chef, my manager, my bar manager, everybody working hard in this place. I made that this happen.
We bet. What do you love most about Taro Kitchen and Cocktail?
I love everything, right? I love the team, I love my, our food, I love the concept, right? The concept started because when I come to talk with the owners, right, I show them a couple dishes, and the dishes I sharing the taro chips, right? They love it. That is the reason we're thinking about the name right now.
Foodie Friday is about the food. So tell everyone, what are we having today?
The first we have is a freeze glass chicken. We're cooking with a French vegetable, right, and rice. The second one is our famous tuna ajicaviche.
Yeah, tuna ajicaviche.
Yeah. All is, our kitchen was, is a scratch kitchen, right? 100% we're working hard on all recipes. We are very proof of sharing the food with our people right now.
So we have that dish with the taro chips, but also you have a drink called the taro breeze.
Yes. We have, the taro breeze is one of our signature drinks, right? We're working hard on this recipe because it's a taro root puree with a vodka. The color is a purple color, very fancy, very nice.
Wow, that's awesome. Last question. If you could tell 10,000 people about this incredible contemporary Latin cuisine here at Taro Kitchen and Cocktail, look into the camera, what would you say?
We are different. We are, we are a contemporary Latin kitchen. And please jump to the restaurant and try our food because it's amazing.
Wasn't that great? You've got to get down here and try Taro Kitchen and Cocktail. Thank you so much for watching, and thank you for being a fan of Foodie Friday DFW.
Okay. Wow. That purple drink, did he say it was pudding? I thought I heard pudding. Mr. Lombardo?
I want to mention one thing that I thought might have been on the video, but it wasn't. So everybody needs to come out tomorrow at 4:00 PM to Doubletree Ranch Park because we're going to give our mayor a farewell reception for all the great work she's done here the last eight, nine, 10, 15, 20 years.
Forever.
So please, come out and join us at Doubletree Ranch tomorrow, and let's honor the mayor.
That's sweet. Thank you, Mike. Okay. Paul, do y'all have, do you have anything?
Nope, he covered it right there.
Oh, there you go. Okay, well, we're going to move on then. Go to the consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda so it may be considered separately and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. Number 12, consider approval of minutes of a regular city council meeting held on April 12, 2022. 13, consider ordinance 2022-1293, amending the development regulations relating to the development and use of property described as the District of Highland Village located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Briar Hill Boulevard, FM 407. This is the second and final read. Number 14, consider resolution 2022-2995, authorizing the sale of a firearm pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 614.051 to Commander Sherry Morrison on the occasion of her retirement from the Highland Village Police Department. And that is it. I don't know whose light came on first. Barbara?
Mayor, I move that we approve items 12, 13, and 14 on the consent agenda.
Okay. And Mr. Feaster?
I'd second that motion.
Okay. Council, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, carry 7-0. All right. So action agenda, we actually moved the closed session item to late work session, so we'll skip down to 16. Consider resolution 2022-2996, adopting a policy for allowable cost and cost principles for expenditures of American Rescue Plan Act coronavirus state and local recovery funds. Mr. Herman?
Mayor? Mayor, council.
Did I miss something?
No. Can I interrupt just one brief second? I just had a question because we tabled 15. Are we able to go back?
Yes.
Into the agenda after closed session and revisit 15?
We have to go back. We have to come back out after closed session.
But we can revisit 15B if we need to in late work session.
I think it's just a presentation.
Right, yes, we can. And yeah, just so you know, I don't anticipate there's any action to be taken in any case. Mostly just a report. Okay. Mr. Herman, I apologize.
No, thank you for clarifying that. So, yes.
As you were aware in the budget process last year, we were receipt of $4.1 million as part of the American Rescue Plan Act, which was basically predicated on population. We actually received half of that this past August, and the second tranche of that will be received this August. So as, these are federal funds that there's a number of restrictions and regulations required in reporting of that. And so before you tonight is kind of a housekeeping measure that they require us to have a policy regarding these funds. And what this really is, is a boilerplate received from the Treasury Department for basically us to just approve it as our official policy. And it states all the required restrictions and regulations and reporting requirements associated with these funds. And so that's really what's before you tonight is to mirror what they suggested that we have in place.
Okay. Mr. Jaworski?
A question, maybe for Scott more than you, but item number five, invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, making necessary investments to improve access to clean drinking water, support vital wastewater and stormwater infrastructure. That's where I was going. There are a number of situations around the city where stormwater, like for example, the big storm we had a couple of weeks ago on the Monday night, where homeowners' property is being overrun by stormwater runoff, even houses being flooded. Is any of this, can any of this money be used as part of the stormwater infrastructure to try to address those issues?
Certainly, that might be something that we could allocate that towards. What we had identified in the process of that was several of our capital projects in our utility fund that would have required a bond issuance. So this was really serendipity in the sense that we were not needing to go out for debt yet because we really didn't have the capacity within our current debt structure in our utility fund. And this has to do with the, what we had identified was water line extension down 2499 as well as the well improvements. So it's a question of where you spend the money. I mean, we have various things we have to spend money on. Those were clearly identified projects that we hope to address with this. And by doing that, that would free monies up to do other things.
So projects have been identified already?
Well, that's what we had discussed in our budget process. I mean, not necessarily written in stone, but you know, that was our intent. As we go through our budget process this year, we can really clarify that because there is a window for this to expend the funds, I believe it's 2025. Is that what you recall? So we have some time to work through that.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Feaster?
Yeah, I just, I guess I want to ask the question. I know the answer, I believe, but this is, well, and this is a loaded word, but it's free money from the government, right?
No such thing.
I understand. What I'm trying to ask is, it's not a matching fund or anything like that?
No, sir.
Okay. So, thank you.
There's no fallback clause.
If we do it right, there's not.
Okay. All right. Council, does anyone else have any questions? Then we need to entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve, resolution 2022-2996, adopting policy for allowable costs.
And Ms. Lemme?
I second the motion.
Okay, council, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So we are going to, I guess we'll go ahead and do status reports, and then we will go into closed session on the early work session item, number three. So let's do status reports on current projects and discussion of future agenda items. Does anybody have anything? I know Ms. Miller is going to give us something.
So mayor and council, every year we nominate or vote on Board of Managers for Denton County Area 911. And this year, Jim Carter's term will expire, so they have reached out to us to see if we are interested in nominating anyone. I just need to get some feedback from council on if you would like to nominate someone. And if so, I need to put that on a future agenda item. Or did you want to just wait and vote on the slate of nominees that are presented at a later date?
Council?
Which agency was this?
Denton County 911. I believe Mr. Carter is still interested in serving.
He is interested in serving again, yes.
Okay.
Oh, you lost out.
I think Mr. Carter's an excellent.
So do we, do we need to nominate?
You don't have to, but you can. We have in the past. Typically, when we nominate, rather than having to vote again later from the slate of nominees, that nomination counts as our vote.
Okay.
But you don't have to nominate.
So we could actually, I mean, if the consensus on council is that, then we could put this on the next agenda for correction.
So we could do it at the next meeting.
I'll do with it.
Okay. Just going to prepare to nominate.
Everybody shake your head a little. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Council, does anybody else have anything they want? Updates on nothing? No more?
Mayor, I might just mention, if you notice the stakes on Highland Village Road, the Highland Village Road sidewalk project is underway. Even a little bit of construction as well. So we're glad to see that moving forward.
Yes. I saw those today. There's a lot of them. All right. So we are going to, we're going to now go into, we're going to go into closed session to get an update on the security cameras under section 551.089, deliberation regarding security devices or security audits. And the time is 7:43. And I guess where we are, we're going to go.